Good evening. As preliminary matter, this is Douglas Heim, Town Council. Welcome to the April 12th, 2021, meeting of the Arlington Select Board. Shortly after tonight's meeting begins, the Select Board will be electing a new Chair and Vice Chair for their business year, following the April 10th, 2021 election. But until then, I will procedurally serve as Chair pro temp. On behalf of the town, a heartfelt thank you to all the candidates who campaigned for elective office. Permit me to confirm that all members and staff anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me for the meeting. Select Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan.
Affirmative.
Steve De Corsi.
Yes.
John Hurt.
Yes.
Len Diggins.
Yes.
Eric Helmuth.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline.
Yes.
And I'll note that Ashley Marr, Select Board Administrator, is recording minutes from the Select Board Office. As an additional matter, there is a slight Zoom double booking, if you will, tonight. So apologies to folks who may have been pre-registered under an old Zoom link. Anybody who wishes to follow along with or join the meeting can find the new Zoom link on the Select Board Agenda and Minutes page or their town calendar on the town's website. The town manager is also working to send an updated invitation to folks who pre-registered. Finally, you may notice that my name, my screen name is listed as Legal Department, and I believe the town manager's listed as Town Meeting. The settings on this Zoom are a little bit different so as to be calibrated correctly for Town Meeting, and that's why it's difficult for us to change our names, but hopefully folks can see our faces and recognize us. Permit me to provide a brief introduction to the meeting and set forth some ground rules. This is an open meeting of the Arlington Select Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the coronavirus pandemic. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remote as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not require ensuring public participation unless there is a public hearing item on the agenda or other provision for public comment, such as residents' open forum. This meeting will not feature opportunities for public comment. An additional advisory is that the Select Board's convening by Zoom is posted on the website identifying how the public may join. While the public may join this meeting either by the Zoom app or using their telephone dial-in number, it's also being broadcast on ACMI. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that anything broadcasted may be captured on the recording. Similarly, to the extent that you can, please also take care to adjust your screen and device name if you'd like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it's helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. Finally, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment and those persons who are not required to identify themselves. All the meeting's materials for tonight's meeting are available in the Novus Agenda Dashboard and the Board's webpage. We recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless otherwise noted. Now, we're going to turn to the first item on the agenda, which is the organizational meeting to elect a Chair and Vice Chair. But before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of business and ensuring accurate meeting minutes. The Chair, myself for the organizational piece, and then whoever selected the Chair for the rest of the meeting, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motion. Please hold until your name is called, which is helpful for those persons who are attending the meeting by telephone. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response further, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And with that, we'll begin the organizational part of the meeting. I would please take a motion to open nominations for Select Board Chair.
I'm moved.
Second.
On a motion by Mr. Hurt, seconded by Mr. Diggins, is there any further discussion on opening nominations? Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Nominations are now open for Chair of the Select Board for the 2021 year.
Attorney Heim? Chairman Heim?
Yes, Mrs. Mahan.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Steve De Corsi as Chair.
We have a nomination for Mrs. Mahan for Stephen De Corsi as Chair of the Select Board for 2021 year. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurt. At this point, are there any further nominations for Chair of the Select Board for 2021?
I'd like to move to close nominations for Chair.
On a motion to close nominations by Mrs. Mahan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurt. I'll conduct a roll call vote. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Nominations are now closed. I know it seems a little bit silly, but now we'll vote on the nomination of Stephen De Corsi to serve as Chair. That being the only nomination, I will simply conduct a roll call vote. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. De Corsi.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you very much.
Then briefly, do I have a motion to open nominations for Vice Chair?
So, second.
Moved by Mr. Hurt, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Is there any further discussion by any members? On a motion to open nominations, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Nominations are now open.
Attorney Heim, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Diane Mahan as Vice Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hurt to nominate Diane Mahan as Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan is now nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hurt, can I get a second motion on the motion for Mr. Hurt, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diggins. On a motion to close nominations, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth? Mr. Helmuth, was that a yes, sir?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Having only received one nomination, we will now, on the nomination to elect Diane Mahan as the Vice Chair for the 2021 Select Board calendar year, I will now turn to a vote. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Congratulations to Mrs. Mahan. With that, I will yield the rest of the meeting to Mr. De Corsi and Mrs. Mahan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Heim. And first of all, thank you very much to my colleagues for selecting me as Chair this year. It's a great honor, and I look forward to the upcoming year. I want to congratulate Mrs. Mahan on Vice Chair, but also congratulate Mr. Hurt on his reelection and Mr. Helmuth on his election to the Board and welcome him to the Board. And I'm just wondering if either one of you have any brief comments before we get to the next agenda item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank Mr. Helmuth and welcome him to the Board for the campaign and the race. And I also, so I do want to thank the voters of Arlington for choosing to reelect me. Like I said, energized and ready to tackle some of the important issues that we're dealing with right now in town. But I did want to particularly thank Mr. Helmuth and Jennifer Seuss, who, this was a three-way race for two seats with three really qualified candidates, I think. And it was a really positive race, and it was an issue-based, idea-based race. There was never any negativity, and I put this out yesterday that, you know, I really think, given that what we've seen in some of the races in Arlington in the past few years, that our race should be an example of how a local election should be run, and a local race should be run, where it's three candidates just really giving ideas on how they can improve the town. I really do want to thank both Jennifer and Eric for that. And again, welcome Eric to the Board, and thank you for everyone that participated in the election, all the candidates and all the voters, no matter who you supported. Thank you for coming on and participating in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. I want to echo Mr. Hurt's kind remarks, but first of all, very much thank you to the voters of Arlington for entrusting me with this role. I am beyond thrilled to serve the town that I have grown to love so very much and am lucky to call home. So, thank you. And yeah, thanks to Jennifer Seuss and for John, and to John for running a really great exemplary campaign. I think it represents the best of Arlington, and you know, we couldn't be prouder of that. I want to also thank Jennifer for her service to Arlington. She's done great things for the town. I know that she will continue to do so. Thank you very much to my supporters who worked really hard in this campaign and my team. And I want to thank my husband, Jordan, for his encouragement and his patience and his support. And without that, I would not be here and could not do this. I look forward to serving the town and working with all of you for the next three years.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth.
I just jumped in because I did actually get yelled at yesterday because my wife said that I never thank her. And of course, now I'm going to get yelled at again.
Absolutely.
So I do want to thank my wife and my kids, who, you know, it's certainly a sacrifice. So I do thank my wife for allowing me to serve the town. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurt. Okay, now on to business. So we will start tonight, or next item is Item 3, a COVID-19 update with Christine Bonjono, Director of Health and Human Services, and I will start with Mr. Chapdeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to you in the chairmanship and Ms. Mahan in the vice chairmanship. And also, congratulations to John for rejoining and Eric for joining. So it's a good night all around. I'll give a very brief introduction. It's been just a little while since Christine has been before this board to provide an update on our continued preparations and activities around the pandemic. I know Christine and her team, along with many town employees, have been working continually very hard in response to the pandemic. There were the past several months now been a lot of focus on vaccinations. I think Christine will describe that our role in the vaccinations is starting to slow down, but there's still many vaccinations to go before we get to herd immunity. So there's going to be continued focus on the restrictions that are necessary to keep us all safe until we get to herd immunity. But with that, we have Christine Bonjono, Director of Health and Human Services, here to give an update to the Board and answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Board, for the invite for tonight. So I want to start by just letting you know that since last March 2020, we've had just over 1,800 cases so far here in Arlington. That includes 86 deaths. We've had a few spikes and a few months where we've had fewer cases, but we're starting to see a slight uptick over the course of the past week. We've definitely seen a little bit of a bump, and we're seeing that across the state and across the country as well. Just it appears as if there's a slight increase in cases. You know, I want to just, you know, sort of, you know, give you an idea of what we're doing in our department. So our department is continuing to do contact tracing, which is essentially where, when we find out that there's a positive case, we contact that case and determine who they have been in contact with in quarantine and isolate cases to prevent the additional spread of the virus. So we continue to do that. We're also continuing to enforce the governor's orders to prevent additional cases and really looking at ways that we here locally can continue to control the spread. We've definitely seen the increase in cases in the younger population. So it's not unlike what we're seeing again across the state and across the country. Our average age for the past, let's say, month is about 35, age 35, whereas, you know, about six months ago, the average age was significantly higher. So it was probably up in the 50s to 60s. So we've definitely seen the age come down a bit, and that is due to vaccinations. You know, and I think also just sort of some loosening of some restrictions that really may impact the younger population. You know, our department also has been focusing since January on vaccinations. You all are aware that the state has shifted vaccinations to mass vaccination sites, and local health departments have a limited role in vaccinating the population. We've jumped at every opportunity to receive vaccine, and we've done that in partnership with Lexington and Belmont. And I will say that by the end of this week, we will have given out about over 6,000 doses of vaccine here in town and, you know, with our partners in the other two communities. We are currently doing homebound vaccinations, so we're going into homes and vaccinating people that are unable to leave their homes. This is an incredibly important group because we definitely saw some, a lot of cases and some deaths, unfortunately, in people that were homebound because of the people coming into their homes with the virus. So we're really happy to be being able to provide that service. You know, we just finished up last week our vaccinations in the senior housing buildings. So working with the Arlington Housing Authority and vaccinating our seniors in those buildings has been, was also incredibly important for our team because we saw a lot of cases that, you know, that resulted in hospitalizations. And, you know, we just, knowing that we protected that population was great for our department as well. You know, at this point, we will be finishing out our second doses of our Moderna and will essentially be closing out our vaccination program. And shifting, we have joined a partnership with a number of other communities just east, northeast and east of Arlington, so including some of them in Cambridge, to establish a regional collaborative to do a mass vaccination site. Unfortunately, at this time, there's no vaccine available to the collaborative, but we are ready to stand up a site in the event that the vaccine does become available. You know, at this point in the pandemic, we just continue to urge our residents to be vigilant. We want to see our numbers coming down. We want to see our residents getting vaccinated. And, you know, I think, you know, with those two pieces, I think we can, you know, we can sort of be on the road to being out of this soon, soon, we're hoping. But it is incredibly important for our residents to continue to wear masks, to continue to stay, you know, stay apart from others that are not in their direct homes and just be aware that, you know, every interaction that you have, somebody may feel that they have an allergy or a cold. It is likely, you know, that they have COVID, and I think that's what we're hearing from people that said, you know, that we recently have had conversations with that are positive. You know, they just don't believe that they have COVID and, you know, that they could be spreading it. So it's important that people just remember to be vigilant and continue to stay safe. That's what I have. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Miss Bonjono, and thank you for all the work that you and your team have done over the past 13 months since the onset of the pandemic. Right now, I'll turn to the Board for any questions or comments. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations. I've already served under Steve as a chairman in Long Range Planning Committee when he was assigned to that. Mr. De Corsi was kind enough to call me a senior member. Sort of gave me the first right of refusal to chair Long Range Planning Committee, but my background and Steve's background, I'll put my financial knowledge up against anyone, but with Steve's long years on the Finance Committee and dealing with Minuteman, the better choice. So he's doing double-duty chairperson. So, thank you. I guess my question or comment, and I'm not sure if it's to our Health and Human Services Director or our town manager. I know the library's opened on sort of a book and appointment only, and they have someone at the entrance of the library to verify that you do have an appointment, and you're coming in by yourself, or I don't know if you can book somebody else with you. I do know that the Select Board's Office, the Treasurer's Office, and the Town Clerk's Office have been open but closed, but you can, again, email, call in, and either drop things off or we get the information to you. And I'm not going to talk about, well, I will talk about Public Works, Police and Fire, who've been working every day through this COVID, regardless of what you may think of them. Originally, when we had this discussion, the town manager indicated that, I was asking when the rest of town offices, the staff would be back in the same model that the Select Board, Town Clerk, and Treasurers have done. So it's still not open to the public, but it's open for the public by appointment or something else. And originally, I was told is when there's a vaccine available, and then I heard it's when this herd immunity, which could be 70 to 80%, and that might not happen until late summer, early fall. So are we saying all those offices, unlike the ones I've cited, are going to stay closed until possibly the fall and no staff come in?
So, I think, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to go first, and then Christine can share her view from the public health point of view. No, we're definitely not waiting until the fall. There's already been a ramp up in staff in other offices. I was in Town Hall today, and the building was quite full, frankly. So as the general population becomes eligible as of Monday, April 19th, and a larger portion of the populations become vaccinated, we'll start having more staff come into the building on a week-by-week basis. And I think the timeline, we talked about it maybe at the last meeting, but the meeting before, was aiming for a controlled reopening to the public sometime in the summer as we approach herd immunity. But I think we'll have staff, more staff coming back in as people are getting vaccinated in the coming weeks.
Okay, because it just seems like a big contradiction. It's been working, and nobody in the offices, the three, I'm not saying open to the public, even if you don't want to do by the appointment. You know, we can want something down to the portico that you need, but I understand the work-at-home thing, and that's great. But just to get staff back in, back to all the technology and hardware and software back in the office. And I'm not being disrespectful, but I'm just, you know, hearing from other employees that's saying, hey, can I get one of those work-at-home jobs? I'd love to do that, you know. They've all been forced to go back to work. So I'd like to, I'm not saying you have to subject yourself to catching COVID, but I'd like to see Town Hall basically running the same way every office as the three have been doing since Thanksgiving. So that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, want to thank Mrs. Bonjono and for all the work that you and the Health Department does. And, you know, I've just having kids in school and being part of the town. I've had a few opportunities to reach out to the Health Department, as recently as last Friday, with questions. And it's amazing that we can get somebody right away on the phone who can answer our questions. And we were getting, we had an issue that came up with an exposure that we were getting some conflicting information on, and we were able to get the answer right away. And I really think that that is a critical asset for the town, that we have a Health Department that is not only working hard to keep us safe, but is available to answer questions when issues come up. And so I do thank you for that. My one question, I know you brought up the regional vaccination site that the town manager had spoken with a few meetings back, and, you know, we're really excited about that with all the struggles that the states have had with the statewide website. So once that's up and running, I assume, are we good to go, A, once we have more vaccines are available? You know, where will, is it one set vaccination site, or does it shift to the eight communities? Will there be some instances where the vaccination sites are local in Arlington?
I'm happy to answer that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm happy to answer that, Adam. So Tufts University in Medford is one of the main sites, and then there'll be satellite sites in some of the other communities as well. I don't believe Arlington will be a site, although I know, we all know, we could run it really well. I think we really are hoping to get into the communities where COVID was, you know, pretty, has hit some communities pretty hard, so such as Chelsea and Everett. So Tufts will be the main site and then additional sites throughout the region, subregion.
And are those vaccination sites available only to the communities that are part of the region?
No, they would, the requirement is that they're open to everyone in Massachusetts.
Okay. And how does somebody, once that's set up, how does somebody sign up for that vaccination site?
So there'll be a link on the state site similar to the other links. It'll be the same process as one would sign up for a vaccination at the Hines or Gillette or any of the other mass vaccination sites. It would be the same system.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Miss Bonjono. Just a few questions. So it's something to maybe support what you're doing and educate the viewers. And I, as I've said repeatedly, I really support the conservative approach into what we're doing. I mean, the virus doesn't care if we're impatient, the virus doesn't care if we are tired. We need to protect everyone as much as we can, you know, I guess, getting the virus. On the B-117 strain, is it more deadly? I know it spreads faster, but if people get it, do they get sicker? Is there a greater chance of dying, all other things being equal? By that, I mean, I understand that we have better treatment now. But what's your take on that, or your understanding?
I'm going to, I'm going to assume that the Chair has given me the privilege.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. So it's my understanding that the strain is just more, it makes it more contagious. Instead of it being more deadly, it is just more, it's just easier for it to pass from one person to another.
Got you. Thank you very much. So are we seeing B-117 in our community?
We are. There are a lot of cases in Massachusetts, and there are cases. There, so we've had a few tested, it's a different test. So they run the test to see if someone's positive or negative. They have to then take it a step further and do genomic sequencing of each sample, and that's not done on every sample. So there are some positives for various strains in Arlington, but we would assume that the majority of the strains circulating right now are the variants.
Got you. Thank you very much. And we still don't know if the vaccine stops people from spreading it, right? That's why we have to wear masks, because you may be able to, the vaccine may stop you from getting sick or dying, but you may still get it and then shut it, right? That's still the understanding?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is, when you came to us last, you said that people weren't necessarily being cooperative with the contact tracing, meaning that they weren't being particularly forthcoming, or some people weren't. Are you still encountering that?
It's rare. I would say the majority of people are compliant.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one brief question before I do, I just want to express my appreciation to Miss Bonjono and her amazing team and staff who have worked so hard, along with the public safety departments and the rest of the town through this pandemic. If you could just remind those who may be watching what some of the ways that they can sign up for or tune in for status updates about the pandemic and the town's latest guidelines.
Go ahead, Miss Bonjono, I'm sorry.
Okay. I don't know if the town manager would like to take this one, but I'm happy to jump in. So on the town website, people could sign up for, anyone could sign up for the alerts that come out weekly. And then the town manager does updates, and I also jump in on occasion and do updates through ACMI, and those are posted online and aired on TV. I don't know if, Adam, you have anything else to add?
I guess I would only add that all the same information that's on the website is also available via the town's social media channels. So there's multiple different ways you can get in and access the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. I just have one or two questions, Miss Bonjono, and one- Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. I just have one or two questions, Ms. Bonjono, and one of the things that has come up. Now that there are three vaccines out there, Johnson Johnson has been out there for a while and people, at least when they first came out, people saying, is it one that you should try to get over another? And I wonder if you could just comment on that in terms of the selection in in when something becomes available.
Thank you for that question. Definitely ask that question on occasion. As Dr. Fauci says, take the vaccine that's offered, whatever is available, take that vaccine. And, you know, I can't say that we've seen one that's been more efficient over the other. I think here in Arlington, we have seen people that have had Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J have all had pretty good success.
Great, thank you. And just in turn, Mr. Diggins talked about the need to to keep wearing masks. But just wanted to ask you about the period after you're vaccinated, there's a period of time too before it it may become effective. And I wonder if you could talk about that?
There's a two week, two weeks between when you get your vaccine, your last dose of your vaccine, or if it's the J&amp;J, the day that you get your vaccine. There's that two weeks where your body's building immunity and you're not fully protected. So we, when we vaccinate, we urge people to continue to be very careful. People should be careful no matter what, but, you know, it's extremely important, because I think some people get the vaccine and they think they're free to to go do what, you know, what they've always done before. So it's just important that people remember that it's it's extremely important. They continue to wear masks.
Great. Well, again, thank you very much and for all the work that you've done. And I had mentioned in an earlier meeting, I brought my mother to one of the vaccinations at the high school. And it was just remarkable, the work you and the team and so many town employees and employees from neighboring communities did for the the older group in in town. So thank you so much and keep up the great work. Okay. So moving along, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which we have three items tonight. Item four is appointment of new election workers. Lisa Carlson Hill, 175 Lowell Street. Giovanna DiStefanis, 113 Palmer Street. Richard Stinfel, 67 Orient Ave. Item five for approval, administrative update to overnight parking waiver. And item six for approval, gifts and donations for COVID-19 supplies and testing. For items five and six, we received a memo from Attorney Heim, but I'm wondering, it's since that came in after the initial agenda was set, if you could just give us maybe a brief description of those items before we have the vote?
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate everybody's patience while putting together a whole bunch of different memos for this organizational meeting. The first item is just an administrative update to your recently revised overnight parking program. It's important to recall, you established rules that basically allowed somebody to qualify for an overnight parking permit exemption based on disability. And your way of proving disability under those regulations was evidence of a handicap plate, evidence of SSDI benefits, a letter from a physician on physician's letterhead stating a disability. Those, that policy was based on recommendations by the Massachusetts Office of Disability. Concerned resident became concerned that handicap placards should also qualify, should be treated the same as handicap plates. The Massachusetts Office of Disability, which has always been a terrific resource and partner for everybody, confirmed that they tend to treat these things exactly the same unless there was some operational reason why we should treat them differently. They thought, you know, it's usually advisable to treat placards and plates the same way. Contacted the Arlington Police Department, appreciated Officer Rito's time. And thought, and long and short of it is, is that with all that information, I'm just recommending that you add the words handicap placard to that list of ways that you can qualify as disabled for the purposes of the exemption permit only. It doesn't address everything else. It's just what you use as proof of showing you have a disability when they make an application to the Select Board Office. So that is that item. The second item, I think we were hoping that we would have a few more items for you on this, but we've been tremendously grateful as a town and the community to receive a lot of donations related to COVID relief. One of our biggest donors, the Arlington Health and Human Services Charitable Corporation has donated $200,000 for COVID relief purposes. They have expected nothing in return. There's no real conditions on the gift other than purposes that are already well-established under Health and Human Services. But the Select Board is technically required to accept these gifts. And it's also, of course, a wonderful opportunity to just broadcast to a broader audience, though I know Ms. Bonjono and others have already been thanking these folks for their hard work and generosity, really aggregating a lot of individual donations as well as providing organizational support. So that's what those two items are about. And I again appreciate the board's patience in in having all that stuff come together for myself and the comptroller. And with respect to the overnight parking addition, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. And on all three items, now I'll turn to the board, Mr. Heard.
Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins.
I'll second, and no need to apologize, Mr. Heim. I fully understand what it's like to be really busy now. And I know you're busier than most of us. Thank you.
Mr. Helmuth, any questions or comments?
No, other than to thank Mr. Heim for that, because as the new kid in the block, it was very useful.
Mrs. Mahan, any comments or questions?
Yes, just a two-part question or a global sort of question. I was wondering if either our Health and Human Services Director or the Town Manager could send. I certainly would be interested in sort of the guidelines that the Town COVID Fund has for what we will expend the funds on. And then my second part is more of a global question with the Recovery Act monies that were slated to receive, amount to be determined somewhat over thirty million. I know President Biden and his secretaries spoke about the oversight they would have and also working with the state. I'd like to know when it is formed, when we get to that point in the process, what the towns, who's going to sort of audit on the town side? This oversight of the spending of those COVID-19 funds. I'm not talking about any money that we can demonstrate revenue and maybe able to put into the override stabilization fund, because obviously that's kind of dry. And also how we're going to get that message out, because I just, I wouldn't want a department maybe think they have a tacit understanding that something applies and then it doesn't, and it turns into something else. So I know I'm probably really premature on that part, and I know that the state and the federal government through state agencies will oversee that. But I'd like to also see how we're going to sort of do that on the town side. Thank you.
Mr. Chaplin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the first question, I'd be happy to work with Ms. Bonjono to get that information to you, so we can put that together. On the second question, I think that depending on how exactly we're able to utilize the funds, we'll depict just how we process them. From an auditing perspective, as you mentioned, we'll likely rely on our finance department and our comptroller's office for the accounting and auditing of the funds. If the fund usage points towards a more robust usage for the nonprofit and private sector, we'll have to figure out what the right arm is, so that, you know, what the right arm or form of government is. So, yeah, as we learn more, I think we'll be able to better answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So on the consent agenda, on a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim. Attorney Heim.
For the wrong call. This chair is having a little difficulty there. Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, item seven, appointments to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Committee. Kate Bender for a term to expire 1/31/24. Is Ms. Bender with us tonight?
Yes, I just promoted.
Yes, it's coming up.
Okay.
Video is not, I'm sorry. Let's see if I can get it.
Good. No, no, we can see you.
Okay.
I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and see if they have any questions from the board.
Sure. I am a twenty-five-year experience in financial services, mostly in human resources. So I have experience in organizational effectiveness, employee engagement, talent management, and mostly in financial services. I recently retired from the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, where I led a group of HR professionals. So with my retirement a year and a half ago, I'm doing some part-time consulting and also made a commitment to get more involved in my community. I've been in Arlington for about ten years.
Right. Then, thank you very much. I'll turn to the board now, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very happy to make the motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Bender. And and at some point, I'd like to ask a few questions and make a few comments. Is it now the time or should I wait, Mr. Chair?
Not as good a time as any.
Okay, great. So so you had me at Los Alamos Labs. And then, and then, and then you really got me at Federal Reserve of Boston. But but really, what CINSE did, let me see if I can pull this up really fast, is the the header, ability to navigate navigate complex political environments to reach desired outcomes. I can just tell you now, I'm going to be reaching out to you because
Please do.
By reaching out to you, I'm not going to be violating open meeting laws, because I can only talk to one of my colleagues here. But there's going to be many opportunities where I think you can really give me some advice. So so I'm really thrilled, and the best part of this take is is seeing the qualifications of people who really apply to volunteer for various positions in the house. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth.
No questions. Just thank you for being willing to serve. It's one of the things that makes Arlington such a great town. And we are delighted that you are willing to put in your time to give us a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan.
I'm very thrilled to have you, Ms. Bender. You didn't really retire. You're just still working and you're not getting paid, so.
I'm giving back.
Yeah, and I see that you do some pro bono work, so, you know. Shout out to you for that also. So you're still working. We can afford you. But we're very pleased to have volunteers. We're always amazed by the caliber of volunteers that we get for the committee, not only the caliber and the experience in the in the background, but the applicability to the position that they're applying for. Because, you know, last thing I want to do is put someone in a volunteer position that doesn't really set them up for success or the town for success. So we've got a double win here. Look forward to when everything gets back to normal in 2023, maybe 24. We actually can meet safely in person sometime, but I will avail myself of the opportunity to contact you COVID-19 safeways that we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard, and I could ask you for a second on Mr. Diggins's motion to?
Second. And just thank you for your willingness to serve. We say this many times, but we have so many people that apply to be part of our community in our our commissions and boards, and we're always floored at the level of talent that we have right here at home. And we get it for free, which is beautiful. We get a lot of great consulting work at a great price. So thank you for your willingness to serve. And my only question is, if UNC Greensboro ever plays Wake Forest in a D1 sporting event, who do you root for?
That's a tough one, but I lean Wake Forest, I'm afraid.
It's a good choice. All right. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Heard, and Ms. Bender, I wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. And we really appreciate you stepping up to serve in this committee. So with a motion by Mr. Diggins, a second by Mr. Heard, Attorney Heim.
Thank you. I'll try to get the order right this time. Okay, so, Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, item eight, request for parking for Whittmore Park, Phase One Construction. Ally Carter and Mr. Chaplin. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Chaplin first on this.
So Ms. Carter will be joining us shortly. This is in relation to the upcoming construction work for the renovation of the park at Whittmore Park, but Ally is here and I will let her describe this request.
Thank you. Ally Carter, Economic Development Coordinator. Thank you for your time this evening. Yep, we're requesting seven spaces in the Russell Common Lot for Jim Corp to park their vehicles, portable toilet, things they need to get their construction project done, which we expect to start sometime mid to late May. And hopefully be wrapped up sometime this summer, but we're requested ample amount of time just to have some flexibility. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carter. Turn it to the board, Mr. Helmuth.
Let's move approval. And just, could you remind the board or tell us kind of where we're at on the schedule of the overall project? Is this starting about when was planned? Is it affected by pandemic or bidding?
We would have loved to have done this last year, frankly, but the with the construction season and when it would have gone out to bid, and there were, there were several delays, but here we are now. And we're very happy with with the design we've come up with, and we're already in the planning phase of Phase Two, which will be accessibility improvements around the house, so.
Excellent. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan.
I'd like to second that, and thank you once again. I sort of, all of us do interface with Ms. Carter on various committees and subcommittees and always really impressed, but I'm afraid to say that and tell people about it, because usually when that happens, they leave us like this work ethic. But it's such a phenomenal job that Ally and others in planning have been, especially around the small businesses, issues and outreach and CDPG. You're definitely working from home, because I see you a lot. And I refer a lot of people and businesses to you, and you get right back to them and they report right back how nice she is. And I said, well, don't tell too many people. We don't want her to get stolen away. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard.
Thank you. Definitely excited about this project and, you know, obviously COVID delayed it, but I think this is going to be a great project by the time this gets through. I know, I don't know if we had spoken with this at the economic development level, but do we know if Aeronaut is out again this year, if they're not interested in participating again this summer?
They are not able to participate for a number of reasons. But, you know, from their perspective, it's just not good business this year. And from the town's perspective, it's just not, we're not ready for that kind of activity, so.
Know if we need to start thinking about a new site, but I understood disappointing. I know everyone likes that. But we'll enjoy it in the brand-new renovated Whittmore Park the following year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions, no comments.
Thank you. And, yeah, I don't have any questions either. Thank you very much for the memo and looking forward to the to the work to be done. So on a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item nine for discussion, future Select Board meetings. And so on this, we will talk about some dates, and also bear in mind that town meeting starts April twenty-sixth. So I think right now we have on our calendar through April twenty-sixth, we don't have anything for May or June. So maybe if we could look at our calendars, and I imagine we're gonna be going well into June, or not June, into May for the town meeting. So as, as we look at this, we will be in session during town meeting, but we probably should pick a couple of dates in May and a couple in June. So I don't know if anybody has any suggestions for that.
And then twenty-four in May.
Okay. Is that, anybody have any issue that, that does seem to make sense? Anybody have any questions on that date or any conflicts?
What was the date again? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, May ten and May twenty-four.
To.
No conflict.
If possible, like to avoid the twenty-fourth. If it screws up the schedule, I can make it work, but if, if it's possible to put it on a separate night, then that would work for my schedule.
Okay. The only issue, the thirty-first, we run up against Memorial Day, right? So I think we, I think the third was still.
How about the tenth and Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Only, I think, and on the tenth, we're still gonna be in town meeting, so we'll only have a one-hour select board meeting. I'm praying to the Lord God above for many things, so I won't say for this, but by May twenty-sixth, there's a fairly good shot we could be wrapped up with town meeting, maybe not, and then we'd switch back to seven fifteen in a full meeting. But just, if people want to pick a different date, but maybe if we could meet that week, maybe not the twenty-sixth. Mr. Chairman, what date do you think, besides a Monday night?
Well, I, I, no, I think that's, that's fine with me because that avoids a conflict. Is the twenty-sixth the problem, Mr. Heard, or is that okay?
No, that's fine.
Okay, and Mr. Diggins and Mr. Helmuth, is that okay?
Yeah, this far out, I don't have a problem. I can, I can certainly block that timeout, you know, so.
So due to seven PM on how many nights before we meet?
That's right.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and, okay, all right. And so for June, why don't we take a look at that, too, and see if anybody, if you want to discuss dates for that?
Any dates work for me?
Seven twenty-one.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And just a question for Mr. Chaplin, does it matter? I don't know if there's anything, as we get closer to the month, that the twenty-eighth would make a difference for the twenty-first. I, I'd like to do seven and twenty-one, but if there's a reason to do it closer to the end of the fiscal year, I just want to ask you about that.
I would imagine we can have any potential transfers the board would need to approve ready by the twenty-first, so I think that would be okay.
Okay, all right, great. How is the seventh and twenty-first for the other members? Okay, good, good. Okay, Mr. Diggins?
I'm sorry, yes, that was not in my head, but I should have said verbalized, yes, it's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, sure. And I don't know if we want to go into July, or do we just want to take care of May and June at this point?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would say maybe perhaps sometime next month's meeting, if you could work with the town manager as a newly elected chair, usually in July, sometimes in August, where we have the one-month meeting, we incorporate the goals and missions forum, charrette. So I guess the June or August date would kind of drive around that. So if you two could have conversations and then maybe come back and make a recommendation at the next meeting or whatever.
True. Okay, so that's fine. So we'll just take care of May and, and June for now. So just to repeat, May tenth, May twenty-sixth, June seventh, and June twenty-first. And this doesn't require, we'll just put it on the calendar. Okay, item ten, for discussion and vote, support for ARB votes on town meeting articles thirty-five, thirty-eight, and forty-three. We have Ms. Rate and Attorney Heim. Turn it over to Attorney Heim first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board will recall, you had some joint meeting with the ARB, and one of the things that came out of that was discussion about select board articulating support for a limited number, or at least discussing a limited number of ARB votes and recommendations within the town meeting cycle. To be clear, the ARB has already had their hearing. They have, for the purposes of forty A, they've reached a vote of the recommended action that was provided to you, and they've set forth the basis of their discussion, which have all been provided to you as you members of the board. I've drafted some sort of generic language if the board is inclined to vote, to articulate some sort of advisory support. Your vote is not necessary. You don't have to take a vote on any of these items. You certainly don't have to, you certainly can voice support, which happens from time to time on a finance article. Sometimes the Finance Committee will vote about an article that's not strictly within their jurisdiction as an advisory matter. Here, the ARB has invited your comment if you'd like to provide it. And so you don't have the controlling motion. It would just be something that I would layer into your select board report as the select board voices support for these articles with this very basic rationale, understanding that the sort of more thorough discussion of the articles is in the ARB's report. So with that, Ms. Rate is available to answer any questions of what we have. Again, this isn't a warrant article hearing in the traditional sense of the word because the articles have already been voted on and disposed of by the body that has jurisdiction. And you are free to support them. You are free to make no comment whatsoever. So if I can be helped procedurally, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Good evening, Ms. Rate. Thank you for, for joining us tonight. Did you want to make any comments on the, the articles? Just take questions, whatever you'd prefer?
Good evening. I'm Jenny Rate. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. I think that Doug's draft is a good starting point, and hopefully you've also had a chance to at least see the report to town meeting issued by the ARB. And I think that that provides even more sort of additional information about the discussion around each item that we're talking about this evening. I'm just glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. So let me go to the board now. Mrs. Mahan?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was hoping I was sending you ESP calling me first. I, I just got these, the comments and the board agenda materials at one fifty AM this morning. I understand everybody's busy and has lots of things to do, but I've done this for several years now in a row, especially around warrant article hearings, materials attached to warrant articles. You know, Friday at the very latest, because I truly do look at it over the weekend. I could not even look at these until, as everyone knows, my family circumstances. I'm caretaker for three disabled adults, and I have my job as a court reporter, which I work out of my home all day long, and I maybe scanned over these for twenty minutes. I would recommend to my colleagues that, you know, we have any questions or discussions, but we did set up a process like two, two and a half years ago, and we did do it last fall, where unfortunately our colleagues on the redevelopment board got subjected to an AFR capture of our open forum, and even though we stressed this was a joint meeting, where we didn't do that this year, but, but the reason why we set up the process was that anytime that both boards were gonna have a joint approval, we would sort of go through the process together so that we would be there for the warrant article hearings, hear the pros and cons, have the materials far in advance. And the reason we did that is a couple of years ago, when we did it and we just endorsed it and, and really kind of got crucified at town meeting because we didn't have the working knowledge, meaning me as a member of the select board, to really explain it as well as even explain it to help the planning board, the ARB support it. And there were a couple of articles in that town meeting that, in the end, I think a majority, one or two of them, majority of the board, if everyone was not in support of them. So we had this process put in place. We didn't do that this time. That's okay. But since we didn't do that, and since I literally have skimmed over these maybe twenty minutes, I wouldn't be comfortable, I don't think the board, we should set ourselves up that way because, and then endeavor for future ARB select board warrant articles, we go back to that process. So we know this stuff inside and out, and if there's something that one of us catches that we don't understand, and after explaining, explaining it's wrong, and then maybe redevelopment board will agree. I'm, I'm just not comfortable voting on these. I'd be happy to vote to receive and any questions that people have, so that, and I'm not trying to be very negative or anything like that, but believe me, I work at eighty hours plus a week, and I've been doing six-hour depositions every day, and then turn around, transcribe, and get them back the next morning, and the two attorneys will know, you know, to get three hundred pages out the next day. I'm really not sleeping. So I would once again say to the town manager and town council, please, 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 we need this stuff. I prefer when I'm chair, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday afternoon at the latest, and in a case of emergency, dump everything you have Thursday afternoon and get that last piece on Friday, so that we're not getting a big dump last minute. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard?
I'll blame the prior chair for, for that. You know, I, I know, when we had this joint meeting with myself, town manager, Ms. Rate, and Ms. Dembery, we certainly knew there would be a tight timeframe because of the statutory requirements for town meeting when the articles could be submitted, and then we had to, we wanted to make sure that all the articles were heard and final comments were made before the auxiliary board, we'll call it, weighed in. I certainly agree on Article thirty-five. I think Article thirty-five is a complex issue that you really, we really would have to have more information on in order to be able to come to a decision on. And I'm certainly not prepared to give input on that. I would be prepared, if the board's so inclined, to make a motion to approve or to support Articles thirty-eight and forty-three, because I think they're similar articles to articles that have been proposed in previous years, whereas accessory dwelling units is something that we've been talking to, talking about for a few years and almost passed a couple of town meetings ago. And I certainly think that that is a good stepping stone to some of the discussions that we've had about affordable housing and really looking at the zoning bylaws to see if there's any common sense changes we can make to support that goal. As well as Article forty-three, I think, is a pretty basic and kind of no-brainer article that allows us to simply create more energy-efficient homes, and it doesn't burden the current footprint of the houses. So I would be prepared to make a motion on those two, but I certainly would like to hear what the other board members would say. And I definitely understand Mrs. Mahan's position on that.
Mr. Chair, if I could modify my feelings.
Sure.
I literally hadn't gotten to the last two warrant articles in this. I was focused on the first. But now listening to Mr. Heard's explanation and skimming through these quickly, and we have had extensive hearings last year, I would share in Mr. Heard's comments regarding the final two warrant articles, thirty-eight and forty-three. So I guess my main one would be thirty-five. I would not watch it. But I'd be interested, Mr. Chair, what my other colleagues have to say.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and then thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, 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 like, thank you on this rate, our second time today, twelve hours later. So, so it's good to see you. I'm still hanging in there, you know, so. And, and, and I'll just say, you know, perhaps the internet just works faster for me, but I got the, the ARB articles from Mr. Heim on Saturday morning at ten forty, but, but I think I'm special. But anyway, so I, I got, I had a chance to, to read them, and I actually had a chance to read the ARB report, and, and I support them all. But I, look, for every reason, we, you know, one colleague isn't ready to move forward, and I've been in other meetings, me and other committees, where when a key person isn't ready to move forward, then I'm comfortable holding back. And so if you're not ready to move forward on thirty-five because there's not enough time to think about it, that's fine. If we can move forward with any of the others, I'm fine with that, too. But, but I will say that I understand ARB's position on all of them, and I agree wholeheartedly. And so that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins, and I'm Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would also support Mr. Heard's suggestion for, that was also supported by Ms. Mahan. And I think I have, I, obvious different reason in, in that I'm very new to, to this, as in a few hours ago. And, and, and I do feel, because of my past study, more comfortable with those two articles in the, in the substance of them. I did intend to review it. I do want to say, though, that my reticence on thirty-five is, has nothing to do with its merits. I actually am really intrigued by some of the ideas that are there and some of the forward-thinking uses for industrial areas. Vertical gardening caught my, caught my attention, maker spaces, artist laws. Something I've been hearing from a couple of residents recently is a concern about the loss, the loss of artists' residences. So I'm intrigued by what's in there, but I think zoning and a big change like that is, is really complex, and I just feel like, in good faith, I, I don't, I would need a lot more information, and I'm willing, as a town meeting member, to, to contemplate that, you know, when we get there. Right, but I think the creativity that, that is apparent there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Yeah, so I, I just have a couple of comments on this. I, I agree with, with Mr. Heard. I, because of the number of items proposed in Article thirty-five, and, and, you know, at least with respect to mixed use, namely residential, there are some changes that I think need to be explained that require some additional research, and, and I wouldn't be comfortable at this stage. I'm not against it, but I just, I don't think as a support. So I, I could certainly support doing Articles thirty-eight and forty-three, and, and not taking action on thirty-five isn't any action on our part on the merits or any feeling. It just, we're not ready to do that. So I think there's a consensus of the board, at least to do those two. So I'd ask for a motion on that.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Second.
So I'd be happy to move to receive the town manager's, oh, sorry, town council's report on Article thirty-five and move to provide our support as outlined in the town council's recommended votes for Articles thirty-eight and forty-three.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Any further questions or comments, Mr. Diggins?
All right, yes, yes, I do. So, okay, I'm gonna stick with my plan to, to vote to support these two. But I guess my concern, though, is that we do, I think, put thirty-five at a bit of a disadvantage if we come across as, like, positive for this one, those two, and then not so much for, for thirty-five. I mean, I, 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 I mean, I really support thirty-five. I, I, I have listened to the, some of the discussion or deliberations on the industrial zoning review with that desire. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting exactly which committees did, did what. But, but I, I've been impressed. I mean, I like where they're headed with it, and I think it's important that we do it. And I'd hate for us to inadvertently put it at a disadvantage. That said, I'm gonna stick with my plans to support the, the vote for another two, but I just want to flag that as a concern about what we're gonna do in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And, and just one comment on that. I, I think Attorney Heim could put that in as a comment, that the lack of action on thirty-five isn't any determination on the merits of it. But I, I think you also run the risk, if you just simply endorse something without having looked into it as a group, that the endorsement or support really doesn't mean that much either. So I think if, if the comment can be clear on that point, you know, won't be a disadvantage, but appreciate what you're saying there. Mr. Helmuth, any further questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. So on a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mrs. Mahan for endorsement of Articles thirty-eight and forty-three and receipt of the report for Article thirty-five, Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my understanding is that this motion would basically mean that I'll fold these into the select board's report as just advisory pieces, so they won't really stand out that much, as you said, since you're not commenting on all ARB articles anyway.
Mr. Chair, I made my, I signed the motion, and I, I apologize, I didn't get your attention for any questions that I might have before the
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I should have. Agree with Mr. Heard's motion. To Mr. Diggin's point, the way this process was set up is that if and when there is some uniformity on the redevelopment and select board that we follow the process and then vote on that and on those that the board redevelopment, the select board invites redevelopment board to vote on and vice versa. If there's not a vote, then there's really no comment. It's just providing the opportunity. So it's so, I understand Mr. Diggin's point. We've never in the past put, we heard, we voted nothing. What it is, this is our opportunity to say, you're invited to join us, one, two, all or none of them. So we only comment on the ones that we're agreeing with, with the redevelopment board. So regarding Article 35 from the selectman's report, select boards report, I'd like to continue with that tradition. And then the, the second thing, only because you kind of put me on the slot, but I went to the select board's office this morning and they also didn't get them until about two o'clock this morning. So I want to find out if Lynn Diggin, Turn, Mr. Diggin's has the best super internet ever. And just asked Attorney Heim, did these go out Saturday? And we didn't get them until Monday morning?
Mr. Chair, ma'am.
Because I have the email and so does the select board.
So
Attorney Heim, I'm sorry.
Thank you. My best guess is that we're talking about two different things. I sent out a draft of the ARB articles at about 10:40 Saturday morning. And then I sent the draft select board report, which is the collections of votes and comments you previously approved early this morning. So I think there are two separate pieces of business.
Okay, but only what it is, is I had my packet printed on Friday and I got to get my town iPad into Dave Good, if we still have him, or to look at it because it just doesn't work. And I had the select board at office print them for me because I just finally started working in January, so I can justify buying a new printer soon. So they print my packet on Friday, but since it wasn't ready, so they don't have to make two trips to my house. And I went down this morning. So that's why, that's where the staff was. And I didn't want people to think out there that when Mr. Diggin's gets them on Saturday morning, I perhaps did also, I didn't. I'm very fastidious when I do get stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, you know, these were two big reports and I want to thank Attorney Heim because I, I see, I got one on Saturday, one at 2:38 this morning, and actually it was up when it came in, and which is ridiculous. But so I want to thank you for, for sending that Attorney Heim. So just to recap, we have a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Heard. Yes. Mr. Diggin's.
Yes, and thanks for this question about the history of this process, Miss Mahan.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Heim. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, item 11. I'm sorry.
I was raising my hand.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I also want you to move on, but I have a quick question, which is, is it possible to come back for one of your next meetings to talk about industrial zoning, the Article 35? Because I do very much respect your time and your input. And I would very much appreciate that as part of this process. Maybe it's not something that will be put into your report, but if there is an opportunity to come back to a meeting, I would be glad to do that and try to figure out how we could do that. Based upon the order of warrant articles, I don't think that this will be the first week of town meeting. So we might have some flexibility in terms of timing. Alternatively, if you do not wish to do that because of just time constraints around town meeting, I would say that I am available to any of you to answer questions. Once you do start to dig into any of the zoning articles, whether it's Article 35 or any of the others that you have a question about, I'm more than happy to answer your questions and try to understand any concerns and address those if I can as well. But I would love for you to feel informed and prepared for the town meeting as well as anybody who's watching. And so I make myself available either to come back to a meeting or speak one-on-one with you if appropriate, or both. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Reed, for that. And I think while our next meeting is the first night of town meeting, so let's, let's start with, I think people should take you up on your invitation if there are individual questions. And then as we get closer to that date, we can talk about whether we make it an agenda item or we just do it based on the individual discussions. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, sure. Okay. Now, item 11 for discussion, draft select board report to town meeting, Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have before you is the draft select board report. It reflects all of your votes and comments that you previously approved. A few years ago, we started just compiling the report. You didn't used to necessarily approve the report. We started compiling the report just as a sort of extra layer. We typically note that the, in the sort of introduction, typically done by the chair, that votes represent who was on the board at the time. So an approval of the report doesn't necessarily mean that Mr. Helmut, who was not present for these hearings, for example, necessarily concurs with all of the substance. In this particular year, because of the length of the warrant article, the warrant and the timing of a lot of what was going on, we just had our sort of both hearing and final votes and comments on Article 25. That's really one of two things that I want to raise to your attention. Because I think it's helpful in to clarify something that I want to make sure the board would be okay with. If you go to Article 25, the vote on the real estate transfer fee, you'll see some highlighted text. The Housing Plan Implementation Committee clarified to me what their intent was with respect to Article 25. And that was for town meeting to approve ultimately what the rate of the real estate transfer fee is, who pays the real estate transfer fee and what the threshold is for the fee to be applied. So that was the only change to anything that was approved by the select board previously. And it's also reflected further in your comment. If the board's so inclined to approve the report with that sort of correction of, of what HPIC was aiming towards, I do think that gets to some of the substantive issues the board was a little bit concerned about with respect to the real estate transfer fee in terms of, you know, how clear it's going to be that the rate's not going to change from year to year, or who it's going to apply to is not going to change from year to year. So that, that's the only sort of substantive piece than just having the collection of your final votes and comments altogether. The other piece was, I did put a list together of the appendix items at the very bottom. Again, I appreciate the fact that this is something that you've received with very short notice and I respect that. It's, it's a lot to take in and his Mahan's comments about, you know, it's not, not, not easy to be given something on a Monday that you're supposed to approve on Monday night. So the appendix items are basically, I think, all consistent with what we had previously discussed in your final votes and comments, what you've traditionally asked for in the past, such as revolving fund details or the CBPG report. So this would all sort of be part of one packet rather than having your report and then a bunch of supplemental reports. So if there's anything that you guys want to take out in terms of the appendix items, again, that's the last, basically the last page. If there's any comments you have on Article 25, you know, if you want me to go with the original vote and comment, that's fine. If you want me to update it in this manner to make it clear that the sort of intent of HPIC was for town meeting to set the real estate transfer fee rate and to set what would be sort of the triggering threshold, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Heim. Just a question too, because I think we have voted on everything except for Article 25. So are you looking for a vote on the, just on the language in Article 25 or the full report at this point, or?
So you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You voted on everything. Again, this is, this has been something that we've, we've started doing the last couple of years just to kind of have an additional layer. Is there anything that the board wants to tweak before its final report goes out? It's kind of an opportunity to, you know, revisit any, anything if issues come up. This is the only issue that's not like an administrative correction that's come up this year. But you don't have to change anything. If you want, what I would basically do is update that language. But if you wanted to keep the language that you had previously approved on Article 25, I would just keep that. I could just basically reinsert that.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine. Thank you for the clarification. And just before I go to the board members too, and this is consistent with the practice that we had the past few years where Mr. Helmut wasn't here for the votes. And as you said, the, the votes are within the body of the report. And what we've done previously, if there is a particular warrant article where Mr. Helmut, let's say it was a five to zero vote, and Mr. Helmut would have voted differently, he can tell, tell me at town meeting, and I will let the body know how he would have voted. So if that's okay with you, Mr. Helmut?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So
This procedure. So, so would, would you or the, or town council recommend that I do or do not vote on this, given, given the circumstances?
Attorney Heim.
I, I, I think you're just voting on approving the report itself. The votes don't reflect your, your vote. So you can participate with respect to approving the report, but it would reflect that, you know, these votes reflect the board prior to the change in membership due to the election.
Great. Okay. Mr. Heard.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with inserting language, saying that the town meeting can vote on the items in 25 pursuant to a recommendation by the select board. I think it's certainly a an article in an issue that will require some more global input from town meeting than just us five members. I always like to say, I'm never one that pinpoints typos because people in glass houses. But on, in the insert on section two, it does say a threshold price set by, by town meeting. So I assume that that can be corrected. And then on the very last page, I'll just note that we appointed Mrs. Mahan as vice chair.
Of course, sir.
Yep. That's it. I'll move approval of the of the report as presented by Attorney Heim with those corrections.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Diggin's.
May I have a second? I have no comments or questions. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Helmut, I'm going to return to you. I'd asked you earlier about that other issues. I don't know if you have any other questions?
No, no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And no, I think it's good to catch up, pick up those. And if we pick up anymore, we can just email town council, because town meeting seems to have a field day with everybody, not just the select board, getting up saying, you know, them should be, your van should be then. And, you know, it seems to kind of eat up time. So I would just have one modification under Article 70, which is the vote on the town clerk study, which the main motion, I believe, is Finance Committee. That was a four to one vote. I did vote in the minority. I would just ask that the last sentence expressing the minority view stops after taking a directly elected office away from voters, period. I understand where the remaining part of that sentence comes, but I'm afraid it might be misconstrued that I didn't feel Dean Common was qualified and didn't really marshal us through a process for success. What I was saying at the time, probably in actually so, was that up until the introduction of Dean Carmen, there were a lot of things that we weren't making, I felt, making decisions purely based around discussing the treasurer's office. So I'd just like the sentence to end away from voters and delete the rest. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I don't think we need to change to amend Mr. Heard's motion for that. I think you can make that administratively, Attorney Heim. So on a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mr. Diggin's, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggin's.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Corsi.
Yes.
Unanimous vote. And I appreciate that any other things that folks spot, Ms. Mar and Ms. Costa have also been terrific. So if there's any other things, we'll make sure we go over it with a fine tooth comb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Okay, new business. Attorney Heim.
No new business. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Chapdeline.
No new business tonight, Mr. Corsi. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Helmut.
No new business.
Okay, Mr. Diggin's.
Well, everyone's been congratulated here tonight, except for me. And so I want to congratulate myself, be reelected to town meeting. And, and, you know, I, I love being a town meeting member. And I just have a little story from that night that encapsulates why I feel so good about it. And I was at the poll, the Thompson School, to get the data from one, three and five. And a couple of people came in 30 seconds before the door closed. And then they voted and they came out and I was talking to another gentleman. And they said, I have my mask on, he said, are you, are you Lynn Diggin's? I said, yeah. And they said, we just voted for you for town meeting. And the woman just gave me a hug and she was so happy. And, and, and you know, I'm also happy too. It just makes me want to do a better job of being a town meeting member. So, so, so I'm happy I get to do it again for another three years. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's, and congratulations. Mr. Heard.
I should mention that I also, in addition to being reelected to this board, am now one of the newest town meeting members. So people have said for years, you got to sit there, you might as well get to vote. So now I have to, I didn't have to figure out how to vote last time. So now I'll have to go to one of the trainings to try to figure it out. I did speak earlier just to thank the voters and when I, and I realized through the meeting that one group that I didn't specifically thank that I wanted to was the poll workers and, and the officers that work at the polls all day on election day. I actually had anticipated with the rule now with the drop boxes where they have to be picked up by eight o'clock that our results would come in around 10, 11 o'clock. And I was really surprised when we were able to get our results very quickly, closer to around 8:45, nine o'clock. So I do want to thank the poll workers and everyone to help make the election move forward. I did want to bring up, you know, there's an issue that came up in Arlington today. There were some banners that were raised on Mass Ave. This came to, there was a banner contest that we've been doing for many, many years. And there's been a process that's always been followed in regards to these banners. I know I've been a past judge on this contest. Ms. Currow was a judge before me. In this particular year, we were brought an agenda item back at the beginning of January to approve a certain set of banners. The banners that were presented to us were not the banners that were ultimately approved. And, you know, at this point, it's caused some controversy. One particular banner is really a number of residents are taken offense to. And, you know, I don't want to, as this is a high school contest, I am not here to cast dispersions on any of the participants or particularly of any of the banners that came up. But I do want to just say that, you know, I think we all could have done better in this process. I think there was a lot of communication gaps between us, the school departments, the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. And, you know, we all have to take our responsibility for people's feelings in, on both sides of this issue that are being hurt. But in the end, you know, that are being hurt. But in the end, you know, we're trying to perpetuate unity over the past couple of years. We've had some divisiveness that we've seen at this board at many levels all across Arlington. And at at any level, when we've dealt with these issues, the Arlington Police Department has been an active participant under Chief Flaherty and the ranking officers. Many officers have joined the discussion, and it's really been a, it's really been helpful to the discussion, helping us move forward to know that we have the, what we all consistently talk about is this community policing model in Arlington Police Department. We often say the town's police department is a shining example of the way that the police department, uh, police departments across the country should operate. And our officers really are should be commended for that. And time and time again, it seems like they don't get the the respect and the admiration that they, I think, deserve. And this one particular banner seems to depict what is really just not the reality of policing in Arlington. And, you know, I know the the contest theme was protest. I mean, I would like to see banner contests or contests among our youth with themes such as unity, or something along those lines that really help our foster, you know, to eliminate the divisiveness that we sometimes feel. Um, but it's definitely doesn't reflect the reality here in Arlington. And if you look back in the past year, where there was a number of protests, sometimes every night, and they were amazing. They, you know, we, Arlington, in the face of this reckoning on racial injustice, stood up and said, we're not going to tolerate this as a community here or anywhere else. And we stood up with our police department and our residents and declared Black Lives Matter, and we continue to do so. But in the midst of all those protests, we never had any instances of issues with our, the Arlington Police Department. And I think that should be recognized, that that, that so that the some of the artwork that was raised doesn't depict the reality of the situation in Arlington. And again, I think people really need to look at our de-police, police department and the community policing model that they consistently put forth and really give them some admiration and recognition for that. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heard. Uh, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and first, the first night of Ramadan. So for those who, um, observed that, I wish you a happy and blessed Ramadan. Um, and I believe it's a month long. So, um, I'll be sending you prayers of strength and good wishes as you celebrate this holy day. And, um, I I agree with my colleague, Mr. Heard's remarks. I'm probably going to be a little bit more. Um, I did have a conversation, a calm conversation versus one I would have had with the town manager this morning. Um, but I had called, I didn't leave a message, he called me back. Um, I do place, I'll accept Mr. Heard's comments that, you know, we all have to know better, do better. Um, but I really feel some of the adults involved in this process. And maybe now we have to be more stringent. Um, and this is the only time this has ever happened. So maybe we learn from this. But me going forward, um, the banners that get presented to the select board, those should be the banners that we vote, you know, a subset of those they choose to put up on, um, on Mass Ave in Arlington. There were over 100 submissions. I told the town manager that I was aware that 20 were forwarded on. And the most controversial one, um, which the artist did a fantastic job, um, she's, you know, definitely has talent, um, in terms of her canvas and and artwork there, originally wasn't even included. Uh, so I've asked the town manager to look into that, um, and to really, uh, firm this up and really make it clear from going forward that if you don't present it to a select board, you don't go out and choose it, uh, send it to a lithograph or a printing company and put it up on on the app, because ultimately, it's the select board's responsibility. And I know, like my colleagues, but I can tell you, I have the the tenor of, uh, ferocity against, um, not just our police officers, men and women, but especially our police officers. I I've been on details. I've been at red lights. I've, um, walked, uh, Mass Ave, and the increase of people beeping and, you know, cussing and yelling vile expletives against, um, our police officers, women and men, has increased. And I think this particular banner, um, I don't know how, I mean, it's right on at the intersection where our police station is. It's a slap. It's similar to when the scabs, um, uh, right across from the police station went up. I mean, we seem to be fostering an environment in Arlington that, um, uh, really speaking poorly, unjustifiably so, against our police officers is what you'll do because, um, the town management, and I did say to the town manager, I hold him and and the superintendent responsible for this, as well as the town manager on previous things. I mean, um, we're, we're, we have an officer nine weeks ago who made an arrest. Drugs were confiscated. We followed the community's, um, lead that, you know, if it's a low crime, you work with the individual versus being more punitive. And he's been out, he shouldn't have been out for nine minutes, and he's out nine weeks. Um, and I'm I'm fearful we're sending a message to our police force. We don't value you. We we say up to your face, oh, you're the best, you're state of the art, national in the country, you're proactive, community policing. And then every time we turn around, we are not supporting them, when in my opinion, um, ulterior motive claims, unfounded claims are made against them. And if if it's something that's serious that needs to be looked into, I I I'm for that. But what we're going to do is, we're going to have all those, um, exemplary, um, officers who are counting the days to get out, counting the ways to get out. And guess what? Guess what kind of candidates Arlington's going to attract when they find out that the town of Arlington does not does not support their police force? And, um, I I hold the town manager that. And I'm very upset about that to the women and men who work at the Arlington Police Department. I I all I do is apologize to you all the time. Um, I'm certainly make my feelings known. Um, I think if somebody, there was a contest and we were discussing domestic violence, and the banner went up where you had a woman holding her newborn or child, you know, huddling in fear as her spouse or mate was about to hit her with a hammer, a hammer, or maybe not mace, but, you know, go to choke around her neck. People would cry foul because what that does is, if I had a child who's 10 or under, um, they look up at that, they see, oh, there's an Arlington policeman, looking aggressively that he's going to inflict harm or spray the face. And, um, some people said, well, then this is an impetus to have a talk with your children. But it shouldn't come out of fear, and it shouldn't come out of information, because Arlington, Massachusetts Police Department does not operate that way. And I feel like defending them has become a large part of my job as a select board member, along with my colleagues, current and former. And I'll continue to do that. But I mean, at some point, this has to stop. I mean, it, I I feel like we're reacting and on police issues, taking a very small subset of a steering committee, about half of them who are very dangerous divisive people who infiltrated select board last year, infiltrated housing authority this year. I mean, I love Arlington. I'm embarrassed now. I'm afraid people aren't going to want to move here. They don't want to live here. You don't want to do business here. So, um, I would like the town manager really to get to the bottom of this. And and I agree, I don't want to penalize any of the students. Um, but I really felt like somebody or some bodies had some sort of motives, ulterior motives, because, um, I know if I had seen that banner of, you know, the police officer maskless with a can of mace spraying it at a young African-American girl with a mask on, what Black Lives Matters t-shirt, holding a megaphone, and the police officer has his, uh, bayonet raised as to strike, I certainly would have said, well, I need, we need to have a conversation about this. Where, you know, do we need to do any community outreach first? Do we need to, um, talk to the men and women of the department? Is this, I mean, I really feel like the adults in the room weren't adults. And, um, I'm just disgusted. And and to the men and women of Arlington Police Department, your select board supports you. I'm disgusted by this. I've been drinking Pepto all day long. After the meeting ends, it may be a different TO, but, um, but I I want this to stop. I want the town manager to stand up for all of town employees, you know, union and M schedule. Uh, and I just don't feel, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And, um, just to follow briefly on Mr. Heard's comments and and Mrs. Mahan's comments, and and, uh, we all received a number of calls today and have a number of discussions. And and I will continue to have discussions tomorrow. The town manager and I will be talking, uh, about this with, um, I believe, a member of the Commission for for Arts and Culture and, um, to 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 part of, did receive more context on this. And and, you know, to our police departments, you know, how we feel locally about our police department, it's that they're they're second to none. But this was an art competition and and and, you know, um, the selection process took place outside of the select board. It was done, uh, back in the January, February time period, and we weren't aware of it. It was a contest that was announced last October by the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. But when they came before us in January, it was for approval to host a sign. So I I think more discussion, um, i- is needed. I understand that that the heard here, and 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 I think, you know, we, as Mr. Heard said, we look at this as an opportunity to to find unity, not divisiveness. And and, uh, you know, it's going to require some difficult discussions and and, um, but I I think we need to have those. So, um, I will be following up with the manager on on this tomorrow. Um, and I I this isn't, um, and and with that, that that's all my new business tonight. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Heard, second by Mr. Helmuth to adjourn. Attorney Hime?
Mr. Heard? Yes. Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Unanimous vote?
Good night, guys.
Meeting adjourned. Take care. Thank you, everyone.